...to perhaps find, provide guidance and financial stability for some of our area businesses, particularly those that are hit hardest in the tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors. So after revisiting this, and the memo kind of outlines the program that we are suggesting to the city council. Just to reassure you that this is a permissible expenditure under the ARPA funds. The regulations specifically identify the industries that we're looking to assess with, which is the tourism, travel, and hospitality. They have identified other pocket industries. The things that we want to kind of be cognizant of is, first of all, federal funding can't be used to cover the same expenditure. So if they had the PPP payroll protection funds, we can't use additional federal money to cover payroll, to cover fringe benefits. They have to have kind of silo expenditures. So that's the first thing that, you know, we've considered when we looked at devising this program. The other thing is it must be a significant financial impact related to the pandemic. Obviously, there may be other ancillary events that may have happened during the pandemic, but if they're not attributed to the pandemic directly, and they use the revenue test as a qualifying event, similar to the revenue test that I shared with you when we first got the ARPA money on whether municipalities qualified for a revenue reimbursement under the formula. And what we are looking at, the businesses being able to demonstrate under pre-pandemic circumstances versus post-pandemic circumstances, or at least during the pandemic, to show that significant loss in revenue. We are targeting about 75% in the first year and maybe 50% in the second year, recognizing that we're still, for most people, still in that fiscal year if they have a calendar year-end. So that kind of is the benchmark that we're looking at. We did reach out to several local businesses that kind of fall within these categories, just to see if we're on the right track, how they're doing, and so forth. I would remind not only the council, but the viewing audience, the Economic and Community Development Department does have three or four loan pools that, and grants that are still available to those businesses. They include the micro enterprise deferred forgivable loan, and that has a $15,000 match. There's an economic development deferred forgivable loan that has a $25,000 match. The pandemic emergency small business deferred loan has a $4,000 match, and the residential landlord forgivable loan had a $4,000 match. So those are, programs are currently in existence. They're on the city's website. The council has already approved those loans. So there is still funding available as you talk to your constituents, meet with businesses, and so forth. There's funding, you know, if they don't quite meet this new loan we're considering, or grant, I should say, there are those other four programs that are still out there. I also might add that the Small Business Administration does have a shuttered venue loan and grant program, which many of our area businesses have taken advantage of. Reaching out and talking to like the LA Public Theater, they have had very good success with ticket sales. The first show that they're doing reflects ticket sales that were postponed from the pandemic schedule. So they're a little concerned about the royalties that they will have to pay. They don't have any particular debt. They have enough funding to have the startup for this season. So they're a little concerned, depending on how the shows and attendance goes, but right now, they seem to be weathering this better. Agora was another small business that we kind of reached out to, to see where they were. They actually are having a banner booking summer between July and August. So they are busier than they had anticipated. So that is positive news. They have also reached out to the SBA to see about a loan or a grant program for them, and they're waiting to hear back from the details on that. We did also reach out to the Franco Center as well. They have taken advantage of the PPP loans. Their biggest issue, and probably the biggest issue across everywhere, is not necessarily related to the pandemic, it's the labor shortage. We are hearing that over and over and over again, particularly in the restaurant industry. You're seeing that everywhere. And unfortunately, that's not something that the ARPA money can do anything about to assist with. That's hopefully just getting people back to work and filling some of those voids out there. So looking at the program in detail, and I would add that when we're looking at this, this in reprogramming some money, we are looking at doing two transfers. So if we're going, if council does approve this one, I've also recommended doing a second transfer for a small $5,000 amount to reflect any kind of additional PPP, PPE equipment that we would need, just in case we have to go back to full masking, people in the hallway, those types of things, that we are insured that we have plenty of masks. Gloves, I can guarantee we have plenty of. It's the masks that tend to, we go through at a very high volume. So you will see the recommendation is to establish a half a million dollar debt coverage grant program, and we are looking at funding that through equal transfers from the CSO storage tank, as well as the redundant water transmission main. So those are the infrastructure projects that we approved. I did note that if we transfer that amount of money, obviously, those project costs are going to be what they're going to be. So that will require us to bond that additional money that we're transferring now. So that has an additional expense of interest of $72,000 for each project, if, if this transferred money would go through. So looking at the proposed grant program is to specifically target travel, tourism, and hospitality interests, our industries. The debt service, maybe in forbearance, or in some sort of deferred program. Typically, when financial institutions or leasing corporations do forbearance, they agree to it, but it's, there, there's a cost associated with it. It could be higher interest rates. It could be, okay, you're paying interest only now at a incremental increase in interest. It could recognize a faster amortization period, because if you're deferring principal now, you're now squishing that principal into a shorter amount of time period. And in some instances, it results in a balloon payment. And most people that are in that scenario and go through this process, under the pandemic rules right now, they're not having their credit impacted at this point in time, especially they actively pursued forbearance prior than, to it becoming a delinquency situation. However, at some point, particularly if that amortization period is shortened, or if there's a balloon payment, they're going to need to refinance these loans. And that's when some of these businesses may have a harder time. So that's kind of why we targeted this, for two particular reasons. One, it's a definite cost to the businesses. It's easy for us to target and audit and, and make sure no other fund, federal funding is, is being covered for these. The, probably the biggest issue is no federal funding up to this program has allowed debt service for coverage. So it allows a cost that's previously been unallowable to be funded with ARPA funds. One thing I will add, the shuttered venue money is out and about, and most people have taken advantage of it. The one business that we've had a lot of interaction with, which is Northeast Charter, we have gone through and refunded a portion of his excise tax as the pandemic had moved through the process and he was, or the company was parking their vehicles. We refunded that to the tune of about $38,000. Right now, Northeast Charter does have an application, and it has been approved, for the chauffeur, chauffeur and tourism and chartered bus industry. The problem is there's been no federal regulations issued yet. So they have the money, the application process is out there, they've received that application process, but there's no rules associated with it. And that's the sticking point, and that's at the federal level. So hopefully that, that will come down with that. But at least, this program may provide kind of a gap financing or bridge grant to help them out and help other businesses out that are in their same situation. So we are looking at transferring the half a million dollar for this program. We're targeting this industry. We may need to increase. Initially, when I wrote the memo, we said up to $50,000. In some instances, that may not be enough of a bridge. So we may have to, when I do the actual order, which would appear before you on the September 7th meeting, you might see that change to $100,000. And that would be up to $100,000. They would have to demonstrate a 75% loss of business revenue in the first year and 50% in second year. They will have to have their financial statements caught up, and by that, I mean, they need to have a full fiscal year pre-pandemic ready. And that could be a compilation by an accounting firm, it could be an actual audit, or it could be their tax returns. The second full year, which would be during the pandemic, we could accept similar information or an internal financial statement. And we would definitely do internal financial documents for the, the current year, because that fiscal year is not over yet. The city contracts with the chamber, John Belial does a lot of our commercial underwriting. We would seek his advice to underwrite these loans or these grants. And that would go, his recommendation would go before the loan qualification committee, which Counselor Clement serves on, as well as I'm on it, Lincoln Jeffers is on that. And the group kind of vets through, we do have two citizen representatives on there as well. So they would kind of vet that based upon Mr. Belial's recommendation, and then move forward to awarding the grant if, if the loan qualification determines, determines that's the best outcome for that. So at that point, I would turn it over for questions, comments, changes?
Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Heather, for putting this together. This is really thorough, and, you know, when I brought this up at our last council meeting and asked that we explore this, it was never with the intent of trying to say that those infrastructure, you know, projects weren't important. But as I think about some of our local businesses that have really been struggling, I just really wanted us to consider that. If I'm doing the math right, it sounds like maybe these funds could help between five and 10 businesses, potentially.
That's correct.
At least on the first round, or, yeah. And then I guess I feel like, you know, when I think about this industry, the tourism, travel, hospitality, you know, the bigger issue here is staffing, really across the board, that's not unique to that industry, for sure. And yet, I'm trying to figure out a way, I mean, these, these funds aren't going to help that dilemma, you know? But that is really what you're hearing, by and large, from other people that I haven't spoken to. Is that correct?
That's correct. And you're seeing it impact now hours of operation in areas, area businesses.
Restaurants shutting down for a day or something.
Exactly.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I'm curious about the SVOG funds, the availability of those to the category that you talked about, chauffeurs and that sort of, you know, motor coaches, that kind of thing.
The shuttered venues
Right.
Do not apply for those.
Absolutely not. It's not unknown, it's just an absolute not.
It's not.
Okay.
It's waiting to see the, the chauffeur federal funds that are out there. It's just, there's no program that has been designed yet to actually get them the money.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I have for so far.
So it, it's a half a million dollars over a two-year period, correct?
It depends on what kind of applications we get. We could, depending on, we could move through this rather quickly.
Okay. So if someone comes in and applies for a small amount, $25,000 is what they need, or $20,000, are we gonna, so that's why I'm wondering if it should be divided into two years, so that, you know, I would hate to use up all of it with, you know, a few businesses, but then we have lots of small applicants. So is there, so if it was divided over yearly, over two years, then we could kind of, you know, look for that possibility and, and prepare for it. Like some of the other loan programs, you know, we haven't used, you know, most of the money that we have there. Is the resolve going to be written in a way that if there's money left over, it automatically goes back to the infrastructure?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Good. Yeah, I just think we want to be cautious in how, you know, if three businesses, four businesses come in and we eat up significant portions of that money, and then we, you know, six months later, we have three or four small businesses that truly could have been saved. So I did, I throw that, it has a caution in the wind, and I'm not sure there's anything we do about it.
And maybe what we consider, and I would defer that to the council, I had initially set the threshold at 50,000. Maybe we do 50,000 per year with a $100,000 max, which would kind of balance what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, right. I, I think that would at least leave it open for, to protect in some of the small businesses that may apply. I'm not sure what the interest will be.
And it doesn't prevent a business for reapplying the second year?
Right. In fact, it'll probably be easier the second year.
Correct.
We'll know about that business. Okay. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, as long as the council is comfortable with that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the administrator? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to state, I guess, support of the plan. Thanks for putting it together. It seems very proactive. I like that, you know, you have the additional funding for the PPE. Seems very, you know, wise going forward, just wise planning in general. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you. Sure.
So I guess something that struck me is I think about some of these other funding pools that are still available and tapped, but not expended. I keep thinking, like, is there something we could be doing differently? Is, is there a reason why? I guess, I'm surprised to hear that. I'm surprised to hear that some of these programs that you referenced, they're, they're still sitting there, there's money still available. I mean, I, is there something we could be doing differently as a city? Like, can we get the word out differently about that?
We can most definitely do another, when we do the press release, assuming council approves this on the 7th.
Right.
And we do the press release on this, and the Facebook posting, and, and all of those venues. We can reiterate that those other programming
Yeah.
Are still available.
Right. Yeah, we just don't want it to be best kept secret.
No, I think most of those are CDBG-related programming, so they come with a different level of stipulations to qualify for.
Right. My understanding, it's pretty rigorous, and, you know, they really have to meet certain criteria, which I think has truly hurt businesses throughout this country, those rules that, that the city has to follow, because if we make a mistake, we have to refund the money, not the business. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So I understand why we're being very cautious, but it's really too bad, because I think there's many businesses that would have been approved. I mean, there's no doubt businesses felt the pain, but because they're not able to document it in a way that, you know, passes muster with CDBG, I think there are some folks that deserve it that are not getting it. No fault to city staff, because I think, you know, they're just following the guidelines that have been set for.
And I would remind you, if you haven't read it, there was an article in the Sun Journal regarding the ARPA funds and what other municipalities are doing. And this is at a similar level, for those municipalities who have elected to do grant programs for businesses. This is at a similar, a similar level that those other municipalities have drawn.
Good. Okay. Anything else? Counselor Clement?
I would concur with what has been said by Counselor Jelineus and Counselor Jensen. Appreciate the work you've put into this, Heather. I think it's a great idea. I do like the idea of the safety valve of two years. May allow us to facilitate a few more businesses that way, but by the same token, they could get taken care of in two years rather than one, so, yeah. Thank you for the, for the effort you put forth. I'm sure I noticed.
Okay. Last call? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to enter into an executive session, persuading to MRSA Title I, Section 405, 6-D, discuss labor negotiations regarding the main association of police patrol unit and Lewis Police Supervisor Command Unit.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Counselor Jelineus, seconded by Counselor Joy. All in favor?
Motion passed by vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Folks, we're scheduled to come to public session again at 7:00 PM, and because of our posting, we're not going to be able to start any earlier than that, so I apologize. Yeah. All right.[1252.65]
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 17th Special City Council Meeting. And the first item is roll call votes.
Yes, roll call votes for this meeting will start with the Counselor of Word Four.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, Counselors from Words One and Three have an excused absence this evening.
Thank you, okay. And if we could, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if Counselor Lee, or Counselor Clement could lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So before we begin, I'd just like to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Bicentennial Parade, and Lewiston is hosting a street fest afterwards. If anyone needs information on Parkin, the events occur, and it's really, the Downtown Business Association really has set up a family-friendly festival on Lisbon Street after the parades. I would encourage people to attend that. But for more information, you can find that at www.lewistonmain.gov/bicentennial. So please visit our website and look at the map and all the activities that are happening. And in reference to, we have a lot of public hearings this evening in reference to the suggested Charter Review Committee recommendations. What I'm gonna do, unless I hear objections from the Council, is go directly to public comments before we bring it back to the Council for discussion. So once the public has had an opportunity to make comments, that period will end, and it'll be strictly the Council discussing at that point, okay? So with that said, agenda item number one, please.
Item number one, Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding the Addition of a Preamble. Requested action: To approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the addition of a preamble.
Okay, and could you read the preamble, or could we have Ed step up and at the table for, throughout the evening, Ed? Thank you.
My name's Ed Barrett. I'm, I was the Chair of the Charter Committee, and I'm also Lewiston resident, live at 21 Leland Street. The preamble reads as follows: "By this action, we, the inhabitants of the City of Lewiston, establish this charter to secure the benefits of local self-government and to provide for the general health, safety, and welfare of our community. In so doing, we establish a local government that serves the common good while ensuring that every individual has an equal opportunity to participate fully in the economic, cultural, and intellectual life of the city. We affirm the values of representative democracy, professional and accountable management, strong political leadership, citizen participation, and diversity and inclusiveness, all with the goal of committing to and pursuing the common good."
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open up public comments. If anyone has any public comments specific to this item.
Charles Arthur Sewell, 135 Bartlett Street, Lewiston, Maine, age 68. I'll be voting no on any city charter revision. And the reason I'm doing that is because I don't believe the public has had ample time to digest what these changes are, as, and they will be voting on, they will be voting on the issue November 2nd, which only leads to about two months' worth of discussion to the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sewell. So I'm not seeing the timer on that side, just for future reference, thank you. Any other public comments in reference to the preamble? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it to the Council. Any questions or comments from the Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen.
I guess I'm not sure of the procedure here, but I'd move for passage.
Okay, so motion to, give me, give me an example of, oh, that would probably be right.
Sure, the motion would be to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the addition of a preamble.
Moved by Counselor Jensen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Jelineus. Questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Now, tonight's gonna seem really redundant, so bear with us, folks. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding Staggered Terms for Elected Officials. Requested action: To approve Option A, two-year terms, or Option B, four-year terms, or neither option. Maintain current charter language of the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to staggered terms for elected officials.
Okay, thank you. Anything you'd like to speak on, Mr. Barrett?
Well, just number one, to reemphasize that you can only, if you choose to put either of these out, you can only choose to put one on the ballot, or none. So you can't put them both out there and let the public choose which one they want. You have to send one or the other to the, to the public for a vote. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments or opinions in reference to the two- or four-year staggered terms? And Ed, feel free to come up to the front table so that you don't have to keep getting up and down. Your, your call. Go ahead, sir. If you could, just state your name, and if you're a resident of Lewiston.
Sure. My name is Kieran Madures Collins. I'm a resident of Lewiston, level 155, Lisbon Street. I think there are good arguments for each of these changes, and also probably good arguments for sticking with the current system, but I wanted to draw your attention to a couple of real potential benefits to each of these changes in turn. Staggered terms would move half of our municipal elections to coincide with state and federal elections. And in so doing, that changes the composition of the electorate in Lewiston in a positive way. It makes it younger, it makes it more diverse, it makes it more progressive. And that leads to better outcomes in local elections. It leads to a more representative local government, and one that's more willing to embrace progressive change. The four-year terms, one doesn't line anything up with a, with a better electorate. It keeps the municipal electorate the same, but it does provide elected officials with more of a independence from passionate and angry sort of flares of, of public emotion. We've seen that during this pandemic, the way that a small group of people who by no means represent the majority of people in Lewiston can create a, a degree of undue pressure on elected officials to do things that are irresponsible. And a four-year term would make it easier for elected officials to do what they think is right, rather than responding to the passions of, of a small group of people. Like I said, I think there are good arguments for each of these. I think there are good arguments for sticking with the system we have. I suppose if nothing else, people are familiar with it, but I hope that you'll keep those potential changes in mind and those potential benefits in mind when you're voting on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments in reference to staggered terms?
He's pretty tall. Charles Sewell, 135 Bartlett Street. I don't care how you stagger them, as long as they align with federal election, presidential elections. There tends to be in Lewiston, a, an attempt to avoid putting elections with federal elections for the President of the United States. And for whatever remedy you can come up with that aligns with presidential elections, I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments reference to staggered terms? And just to be clear, so this directly impacts both City Council and School Committee staggered terms?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, for the public's sake. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the Council. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. I'm sorry, yeah? Oh, no, no. Yeah, thank you very much.
Christine Holden, 183 Summer Street, Lewiston. I have a very minor but important, if that makes sense, comment, and that is, some of you know me as a volunteer proofreader of the Lewiston City Plan, all 600 pages, and I'd just like to say that I'm happy to volunteer to be a proofreader for this, because at least as printed in the newspaper, four-year, two-year are not hyphenated the way they are in Section 201. So I would just make a suggestion that that be, be uniform throughout. And also, for example, writing Option A, two-year terms, Section 2.01, the mayor shall not be eligible to serve for more than three full consecutive terms. I think if you're talking about that in the two-year section, you should have full two-year consecutive terms. Similarly, if it's in four-year, you should spell out how many years that is, just for clarity, and that would be my suggestion. But again, I'm volunteering to help with that. I know it's a big job that people have done, and I do commend you for all the work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, for real this time, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just to kind of lay my cards out, I'd probably support a two-year term over a four-year, but I'd rather go with, I'd rather go with the staggered term than non-staggered term, so, you know, neither to me wouldn't be an option. But my preference would probably be for two years, because I mean, serving in office, in municipal office, for coming on about five years now, I mean, it's a long time. Four years is a very long time. It feels a lot longer than that. So, just the idea of a four-year term and not having a lot of resignations, you'd probably see a lot of resignations, I feel like, unfortunately. So to me, I think I'd be most comfortable with two-year, but I'm open to what my colleagues have said.
Counselor LaJoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo the same concerns as Counselor Jensen. I've said this to my wife before, I wish it was four years, so I didn't have to go out and campaign every two years. However, I find that a four-year term is quite a long commitment to make, and also, I think it also depends on age, and I think I mentioned that at the other meeting, the past meeting, is for a young individual to commit himself for four years, and is trying to build a career for himself outside the politics. I don't, to me, it'd be quite a commitment, so I would go more for two years, staggered terms. That's the way I would look at it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I also would agree with two-year terms, and I'm really ambivalent as to whether they're staggered or not. Staggered probably would be better for the city, but I think there may still be a question as to whether or not this can be accomplished by this vote. So I could go either way on it. I would go with the majority of the council. I think two years, four years is too long. I don't like the idea of setting up elections with national elections. It wouldn't be a national election in every instance, so, you know, I think the, keeping the present system that we have or staggering two-year terms would be the way to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? I, you know, I agree, I think four's too long, I think two's too short, to be honest with you, because really, once you get elected, you're almost in campaign mode almost immediately, and I think that's a disservice to our community, but it's been like that for a long time. And I know three years just brought a lot of, a lot of baggage with it, trying to get that in.
Yeah, basically, just a little background of what we discussed at the committee. Our preference was actually three-year terms with annual elections. To do that, however, you end up complicating a lot of other, making a lot of other changes in the charter. If you want to have an equal number of people up for each election, then you have to add people to the council. We talked about that. If we were gonna add people to the council, we would look at at-large positions, or either two at-large or an at-large, and the mayor always voting as a member of the council. In analyzing what was possible under the charter amendment versus a charter revision that required a charter commission, we determined, talking with the, with the city attorney after the recent Portland case was announced, that either going to two-year staggered or four-year staggered terms was not a significant enough change to require a charter commission. But going to a three-year term and adding people to the council and adding at-large people that are not in the, in the charter now, and that reflects through a whole bunch of other parts of the charter, how the composition of the planning board, composition of the Board of Appeals, some other areas like that, how you get nominated and elected. So with that, we decided that, you know, we believe staggered terms would make some sense. I gave you some numbers in the report on the turnover that we've experienced on council and school committee in recent years, and discussed some of the issues that creates. So basically, the committee came down with staggered terms would be important of the two, the committee probably preferred the two-year, simply for the same reasons you've been talking about, it's what we currently do, four years seems a little bit long, and if we wanted to do it without a charter commission, this was the easiest way to accomplish that. I will take a second and just talk to the issue of whether going to staggered terms is an, could be considered an amendment or a revision, and I know there was some discussion of that in the newspaper today, given an earlier opinion in the, in the city of Auburn that came out before the Portland case. And as I said, originally, we understood going into this that probably any change to staggered terms would require a charter revision and a charter commission, but the court ruling, just to read some interesting parts of the court decision, obviously didn't speak to a specific issue, it spoke to providing guidance on what was an amendment and what was a revision. One quote is, "The critical question is whether the proposed change is significant enough to require a potentially years-long inquiry into all aspects of the municipality's government. The distinction between an amendment and revision, therefore, is essentially one of the scope in terms of both the breadth and what would be affected and the depth of what would be altered. In terms of breadth, a proposed amendment would not, if enacted, materially affect the municipality's implementation and the course of its operations of major charter provisions that are not mentioned in the proposed amendment. In terms of depth, an amendment would not, if enacted, make a profound and fundamental alteration in the essential character or core operation of municipal government." So simply going to staggered terms, particularly the two-year version, doesn't change much. Doesn't affect the role of the mayor, doesn't affect the role of the council, the authority and, and ability of the council to act, does not impact the nature of the city administrator and the relationship between various people, nor does it have a significant impact on the other elements of the charter. So we felt quite confident, and I again confirmed it with the city attorney today, that this could be done through a charter amendment. One brief comment on process, any amendment or any action on the charter, once it's approved, goes into effect on the first day of the next municipal year. So if you adopted this amendment, one of these staggered term systems, would go in, that, that chart, part of the charter would go into effect after this election, would not really affect an election until two years, I think 2023, which would be the next regularly scheduled municipal election. So it's not like you would be electing people and then having to revise the whole thing if somebody said it didn't count. Once it's, once a charter amendment is approved by the voters, there's a 30-day period in which 10 members of the public can petition the court to review the process that was used to adopt the amendment. If that doesn't happen within that 30 days, it's done. It's fine, whatever, whatever was done would be acceptable, so. In the grand scheme of looking at risk analysis, it's not a huge risk, and we think pretty comfortably, based on what the court was saying, that a court, a charter revision has to be much more significant than we may have thought prior to the most recent court ruling.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve Option A to send to the voters in November.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. And Madam Clark, are you okay the way we're kind of moving these motions?
Sure, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
All right, motion on the table, final questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Sure, so just for clarification, it's not gonna be the motion that's in your book, but the motion would be to approve Option A, just so we're all clear. Counselor from Word Four?
Yes, to approve Option A.
Thank you. Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it'd probably be better if we stuck to the motions in our books, you know, and then, and then adding the A, or if there's something like that. So anyway, just councils, whenever we're doing our motions, try to stick to that. Agenda Item Number Three, please.
Item Number Three, Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding the Creation and Appointment of Ad-Hoc Committees. Requested action: To approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the creation and appointment of ad-hoc committees.
Okay, so I'll give that an opportunity briefly?
Sure, very briefly, there has often been confusion about the creation of ad-hoc committees, and once they're created, who appoints them? So this is an effort to try to clarify the situation by first making it clear that an ad-hoc committee can be created either by the mayor or by the city council, so that either group could create such a committee, but the authority to appoint would, would remain with the mayor in both instances with one minor adjustment, and that is, if the council was creating an ad-hoc committee, the mayor would have to consult with the council before appointing the members. I think that's intended to avoid a situation, for example, where, well, number one, it doesn't, doesn't change any of the authority the mayor currently has, which I think is important, and number two, it can avoid a situation where the council wants to create an ad-hoc committee to look at a problem or an issue, and the mayor appoints a bunch of people who don't even want to deal with the issue and don't, never meet. I don't know that that would ever happen, but the fact that there would have to be at least some consultation would, I think, ease the process, because in the past, there has been some heartburn over the mayor's appointments to various ad-hoc committees, particularly those the council had a big interest in.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing in reference to ad-hoc committees and clarifying, the council's always probably had that authority, but this is clarifying that in the charter, which I think is really important. Any public comments in reference to the ad-hoc committee changes? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Clement, I'm sorry, I lost track there, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. Do you want to read that motion into the record, please?
Sure, to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the creation and appointment of ad-hoc committees.
Okay, thank you. Back to the council, any final questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, please.
Item Number Four, Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding the Elected and Appointed Officials Forfeiture of or Removal From Office. Requested action: To approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the elected and appointed officials forfeiture of or removal from office.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
The current standard that we're looking at adjusting is, well, first off, forfeiture of office applies to a bunch of people, the mayor, the city council, the counselors, school committee members, planning board members, members of the Board of Appeals, and members of the Finance Committee who are appointed by the mayor. The current standard for removal, one of the current standards, is conviction while in office of a crime or offense punishable by imprisonment of one year or more, or a crime of a sexual nature, or of dishonesty or false statement. That standard was put in, the last charter committee put that standard in, because it used to be a conviction of a crime of, or of an offense of moral turpitude. The concern the last charter committee had was that was fairly undefined, and they instead basically went with the state law, what constitutes a felony under state law. Part of the reason the lack of definition was a problem is there's no enforcement mechanism in the charter. If somebody is, under that standard, if somebody is stopped and arrested for driving while intoxicated, is that a crime of moral turpitude or not? It's something you can end up arguing about and having lots of lack of clarity, particularly without an enforcement mechanism other than potentially going to court. So there was some feeling expressed as we got into this process from elected officials in particular, that the standard was not, was too, too precise and too limiting, that there were other situations that might not qualify as a felony conviction that would justify forfeiture for office, from office. So basically, we're making a number of recommendations. First is to go back to the, the moral turpitude standard, but then to create a procedure for revol, resolving any controversies over whether a forfeiture has taken place. It could be on other issues of forfeiture, not just on, on moral turpitude. It could be, for example, does the person still live in the ward where they were elected from? Have they relocated? I mean, those kinds of issues have been raised in the past, and we've all kind of looked around and said, well, we don't really want to deal with that, because there's no really, really easy way to deal with it. So basically, by creating, we'd create a procedure for resolving controversies over whether a forfeiture has taken place, that would require the appropriate body of elected officials, either the city council or the school committee, to hold a hearing at which witnesses and testimony could be taken from both sides, and where removal from office would require an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members of that body, with the individual charged, with the forfeiture not being able to vote on that issue because of a conflict of interest. So basically, it provides for a mechanism to enforce the forfeiture provisions. In terms of the other appointed boards, the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the Finance Committee, the mayor's appointees to the Finance Committee, the process is a little bit different. Since the mayor appoints those individuals, any action would have to be initiated by the mayor. So the mayor would have to come to the council and say, I want to remove Person X from Board Y for the following reason. At that point, everything would pretty much continue to be the same in terms of the process. It would require a, two-thirds, or I'd vote at the council of five members to remove somebody from office. The other distinction for those appointed boards is that removal could be for other reasons than forfeiture. So you could remove somebody for being consistently rude and abusive to the public or other members of the board, you could remove somebody for failure to follow the appropriate rules of the, of the, of the organization, the bylaws, those kinds of things. So it'd give you a little bit more flexibility, because there have been situations in the past where issues have arisen about how to remove somebody from one of those appointed boards, and it's never been clear, although it's been assumed to some extent, that the mayor could remove people after a hearing and for cause. I don't think we necessarily wanted to have the mayor have total responsibility for removal. You could see where somebody might misuse that authority, if there was a new person elected and they wanted to appoint a whole different planning board, for example, I don't think that would be appropriate. But it does give a procedure and a process that allows you to enforce the forfeiture provisions and/or in other circumstances potentially remove somebody from an appointed office for inappropriate behavior.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're gonna open the public hearing. Are there any comments in reference to the changes to forfeiture of office and removal? Mr. Soul?
Charles Sol, 135 Butler Street, Lewiston. I noticed that three councillors are missing. Two have been acceptable through the, by the council for being absent. The third is in question. Does that mean that he could be replaced for missing a meeting? And why are the other three councillors not here on such an important issue? That is mind-boggling to me. So my question is, is that, would that term that is being discussed be reason for his removal from his office as city council?
No, the charter speaks of removal of office for missing meetings. You have to miss three consecutive meetings, so. But councillor Pettingill is not missing a meeting. He resigned from the council earlier this week, and the other two councillors have been excused, because this is a special meeting, and it was kind of, so that's why they've been excused, so. Anything else?
There seems to be a lot of resigning in this administration.
Anything else in reference to this agenda item?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other, yes, ma'am? Thank you.
Christine Holden, 183 Summer Street, Lewiston. I have a question on section 2.08, I believe it's the beginning of the third sentence. It says, "A member charged with lacking the qualifications, et cetera, et cetera, shall be entitled to a hearing on demand." Who is demanding it?
The, the-
The person charged.
Yeah, the person charged or being challenged.
Okay, and then presumably, as it says, they are going to be given the notice of the hearing, which they've asked for, and they may have the opportunity to have it be a public hearing if they so choose, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I just was a little unclear as to why the "on demand," because obviously, if the council as a whole is charging this person, they're the ones usually demanding it, right?
I'm not sure I understand, do you understand the question?
Well, yes, the council could remove somebody from office without a hearing.
Okay, thank you.
But if the person is notified that the removal is being considered, they can demand a hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments in reference to this item? Good evening.
Hi, Heather Farabee, 17 House Street. I just wanted to make note that there have been mayors like Lionel Gueye and Shane Bouchard who have been investigated for hurting young girls and other people in the city, and-
I'm not, I'm not-
They're still-
Hold on, Heather.
There should be-
Heather, hold on. With all due respect-
A mechanism?
No. So we're not going to name names of people who are not able to stand here and defend themselves, and I'm not-
But they still have their photos out there. Is there anything being done about, once they resign, how we proceed and see them in the light of the city?
Yeah, you're outside of the scope of this agenda item. So if you have an opinion that, I'm not sure how you could tie your, what you're saying even into this agenda item. So, anything specific to this?
It is-
Not signs, not prior accusations?
I'm not talking about the accusations. I'm just saying, like, after they resign, why, like, shouldn't their pictures come down, like?
Yeah, but see, that's not even the subject of this, this agenda item, Ms. Farabee. So more specifically, do you have a comment in reference? I mean, their picture has nothing to do with the charter.
It has to do with going forward, like-
Okay. So I'm sorry, I disagree with you.
I'm just saying, it should be, you guys can talk about it in the committee, like, how do you go forward after someone resigns? Like, we're talking about resignations right now. Like, how do you proceed in the public light?
Yeah, so we would have hearings publicly, so that, that would bring this to light. Anything you'd want to add to that?
Well, just to clarify, that the hearing could either be an executive session or in public if the person charged asked it to be in public.
Right.
It could be an executive session generally, because it would qualify under state, state meetings law for a personnel matter.
And then any decisions would have to be made in public?
The vote would have to be done in public, yes.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Comments or questions from the council? Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under section 206 and 501, I would like to propose, not formally, but I'll bring it up for discussion this time, that we amend the order before us and delete the phrase in section three, under 2.06, to another ward within the city with more than 12 months remaining in term of office. I personally believe that if you leave your ward and you're a ward-elected councillor or a school committee member, you should forfeit your office. I don't believe we should be allowing them to just move anywhere. They were elected to represent that ward. If they left, say, my ward and moved to Ward One, it's an entirely different constituency, and I just don't see that. So I think for that reason, we ought to consider dropping that part of it. I will go along with the language. I think it's hard time, we have something other than what's in the current charter, and I believe the crime of moral turpitude will give us some latitude. There are things that would apply, that might not, under the current charter, and it gives the council specific authority to decide those matters, which do not exist now. Basically, it would appear to be an honor system.
Okay. Councilor Jalinas?
I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that I endorse that recommended change by councillor Clement.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jensen?
I would just also agree.
I would also agree.
Okay, so any motion should just state with that amendment, are we clear on what that amendment is? That if somebody moves out of their ward, that's, this right now allows them to, within 12 months of the end of their term, to move, but still represent that ward, and we're saying that we don't believe that should be part of this.
Right, and that was section 2.06 subsection A.3, which pertains to the city council, and section 5.01(c)(3) regarding the school committee, and I believe the amendment is simply just to remove the language that's underlined. Is that correct, counsel?
That's correct, madam.
So I would say that councillor Clement probably moved the motion, and councillor Jalinas probably seconded it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, but we're still discussing-
Yes, yes, so that would be, so that would be the motion before you, is should the council adopt that amendment to remove that reference?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So I have a question about if a mayor doesn't move to remove a planning board member, let's say, because he has a lot of friends on there. It doesn't appear that the council could overrule that.
That's correct, because, and what we did there is, I went with talking to the city attorney. His opinion over the years has generally been that the mayor currently had the individual authority to remove somebody from one of those boards as the appointing authority. Now, that would also require that the mayor go through a hearing process and due process hearing and all that kind of stuff, and there would have to be cause. But it's just so ill-defined, that I thought it was important that, A, we not, number one, undercut the authority of the mayor that the city attorney feels he already has, but B, that there be some check and balance against using that authority, so that, like you say, I mean, you get a new person elected, they could throw everybody on the planning board out and hire, and appoint all new people, which would be, I think, pretty inappropriate.
What if it's opposite, though, that if somebody on the, on one of those boards or committees violates a law of moral turpitude, and the mayor refuses to remove him from an office when they really should be removed? There should be some type of trigger that the council can override the mayor's decision if he, you know, if that board is filled with all his friends and somebody gets arrested for a sex offense, and the mayor refuses to move something forward, should there be an avenue for the council to step in?
That's what I heard, Mr. Mayor, and I believe that to be the case, there should be.
Yeah, it's not written, it's not written that way.
No, right now, it couldn't be. You know, the mayor has the sole authority. I mean, I don't want to remove power of the mayor, but I don't think that really does. I think it just protects the community in case we have a rogue mayor.
Right.
Yeah, there's ways we could, we could cover that. One way would be that we could, you could create a system where, you know, five members of the city council could also initiate the removal.
I think that's a supermajority-
Supermajority would work fine.
-good protection. So could we add that as an amendment?
Do you got a copy of the amendment? I can probably write something quickly.
That was-
But it hasn't been, are we going to be okay without that being published, Kathy?
Well, that's sort of my hesitation, is that, I guess I'm wondering, Ed, if the council wanted to direct the charter committee to review that and issue a recommendation that we could schedule a public hearing on just that one matter for September 7th, because that, the rest of it will be handled tonight. As you know, we have to get it to the printer on the 3rd, but if it's just that one remaining small item, I think that would be okay from a ballot production timing-wise. But I would agree with you that I think for transparency, it was not in the legal ad regarding tonight's change.
Okay. All right, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be a lot more comfortable writing something-
No, you're right, I don't, I don't think we should do anything on the dime, so I appreciate that. All right, any other, so we have a motion on the table and a second with an amendment. Any other questions or comments?
Put the amendment.
Yes.
Okay.
Not my amendment, the amendment made by councillor Clement.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, no other questions or comments? Councilor Clement?
Can we make this contingent upon a final recommendation from, or do we need to do it that way? Or they'd just be looking at that one particular section?
Right, you could, you can make that amendment now, and that takes care of that, so we can just worry about the one other change.
Can I stay under the amendment then?
Okay, very good. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, call the roll, please.
Sure, councillor from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero. So now the motion, the main motion is before you as amended, which would be the not including that strikeout, not including that underlying language.
Okay.
So you'd adopt the rest of the changes minus that that you just removed.
And we'll need another motion and second?
Yes, please.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor LaJoy. Any discussion? Okay, I probably should go to the public again, just because that changed. Is there any public comment? Okay, thank you. Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a comment was made a little while ago that after three absences, the individual could, could be-
Removed?
Removed?
Yeah.
It would be unexcused absences?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, it says three consecutive meetings. I'm not sure it says excused or-
I believe it refers, reference in there to unexcused.
It does reference unexcused.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So we're at six now?
Number five, actually.
Oh.
Sorry.
I tried. Agenda item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and adoption of an order regarding an amendment to the city charter regarding the planning board and Board of Appeals. Requested action to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot, which relates to the planning board and Board of Appeals.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first item that would change here is that, while the mayor would retain the authority to appoint the members of the planning board, such appointments would require confirmation by the city council. The discussions at the committee were, the planning board is probably the second most important body, or third most important body in the city after the council and the school committee. And it's important that that group be broadly representative of the community and the views in the community, and there is some concern that that could not always be the case, depending on who the mayor chose to appoint. So it's just a little bit of a, of a guarantee that the mayor's appointments to the planning board are reviewed by the council and that they confirm them, just as a lot of the presidential appointments and the governor's appointments are at the state, federal level.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open a public hearing.
There's a couple other things.
Okay, go ahead.
The second part is that they're current, they currently have a term of five years on the planning board and the Board of Appeals. We felt that that was too long, for some of the same reasons you talked about, four years for city council, and we're recommending that be shortened to three years, with a maximum of three consecutive full terms. Right now, the language on term limits is that they can serve no more than one full five-year term within a 10-year period, which gets a little confusing, because theoretically, it's just hard to track, and it's a little bit confusing. So this would make it very simple, be appointed for three years, you could be appointed three times, and that was a three, for three consecutive full terms. And then finally, this is something that I think is already the reality, but needs to be clarified and spelled out in the charter, and that is that if you're on the Board of Appeals, you can't be appointed to any other board whose actions are subject to an appeal to the Board of Appeals. So you can't be on the planning board and the Board of Appeals at the same time, because the decisions of the planning board are appealable to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing in reference to the planning board and Board of Appeals. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Questions or comments from the council? Entertain a motion?
Move for passage.
Second.
Okay. Moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor Jalinas. Back to the council. Questions, comments? Seeing none, do you want to read that into the record?
Sure, to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot, which relates to the planning board and Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. With that, call the roll, please.
Sure, councillor from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, public hearing and adoption of an order regarding an amendment to the city charter regarding the school budget process. Requested action to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot, which relates to the Lewi, to the school budget process.
Very simply, the state has basically preempted how the budget, the school department budget has to be adopted, and the state process does not match the city charter process, which creates a lot of confusion on the part of those who read the charter and say, well, how come the city's not doing X, Y, and Z? Well, we can't, because the state says we have to do it this way. So this would eliminate that conflict and specify that the only portions of the budget process that apply to the school committee are those that haven't been preempted by state law. So basically, we're stuck following state law. It also simplifies the process for enacting a budget if the council fails to act on a timely basis. And basically, if the council, right now, the process is broken for a couple of reasons. The council doesn't adopt a budget by the end of May, city administrator has 72 hours to meet with the school committee, put together a final proposal, send it back to the council, and if that isn't adopted within a, I think, 15, or 10 or 15-day period, that proposal goes into effect. Well, that simply doesn't work, because you can't adopt the school budget that way. The school budget can only be adopted through the referendum process, the budget validation vote. So this would get rid of, of the school from that part of the process, and basically just indicate that if the council didn't adopt a budget by, I think, by the end of May, manager would come back with a final proposal, and the council, if it did not act by the end of the fiscal year, the end of June, that final proposal would become the new budget. That would, I think, reflect, you know how the budget process works. By the time you get through the budget process, do a certain important, you've made probably 80% of the decisions. So the manager could, instead of, a lot of places say that the manager's originally proposed budget would go into effect. Well, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because by the time you're at the end of the budget process, you've made a lot of changes in it, and everybody's comfortable with it. Why revert to an earlier document that no longer applies? So basically, this would just be, here's the final proposal, it incorporates some of some of what we've talked about, the changes the council wanted to make, you have reached agreement on everything, here's my last and best offer. If you don't like it, come up with something that you do like. So it doesn't take any power away from the council, but it does ensure that there is a budget as of the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions or comments in reference to this item? Okay, seeing none, bring it to the council. Questions or comments?
No. Move the requested action?
Has written.
Has written.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Sure. Counselor from Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 7, please.
Item number 7, "Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding Budget Expenditure Limit: Requested Action to Approve the Order Directing that an Amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the budget expenditure limit."
No doubt, this is one of the more exciting meetings we've had.
You have to understand, this is an issue that has driven some of us crazy, in that, again, it conflicts with state law on the school budget, which then puts extra burden on the city side of the budget, plus it uses a measure that nobody understands. Right now, just for everybody's benefit, the city's total expenditures are limited based on the gross domestic product implicit price deflator as of the previous September. Now, nobody knows what that is, which creates some confusion right off the bat. It's basically an effort to measure real domestic growth in product, domestic product. Second, it's a national measure, which does not take into account local conditions or regional conditions. And third, it's applied, as I mentioned, to the school budget, which doesn't work because that limit can be overridden by a five-member vote at the council, but it only requires, state law says a simple majority vote of the council is required to approve the school budget. So the council can approve the school budget 4 to 3, and that budget in and of itself can be in excess of, have an increase in excess of the GDP IPD, which means then, if the council can't get five votes to approve the city budget, all of the overage has to come off the city side of the budget, which can be really significant. I mean, I think in one year, we were looking, Heather, like, at $5 million that would have to be cut from the city side of the budget to get below that measure. So we're doing a couple of things here. The first is, we're looking at a different limit, and that limit would be the Consumer Price Index Urban Northeast, which is a measure of the actual rate of inflation in urban areas in the northeastern United States, so it's more reflective of local conditions. And the second, it would apply to the tax levy rather than overall expenditures. And I think that reflects what most citizens are most interested in, which is their property taxes and what's happening to their tax bill. So it would be a limitation on property, on the tax levy, the property taxes. And then, third, as mentioned, it would exclude the school budget from that calculation because it simply doesn't work anymore, given state law and state law requirements.
Okay, thank you. I'm expecting a lot of public comment on this item, so I'll open the public comment period. And I don't want to diminish the importance of this. Actually, this is a good change in our charter, so.
Yeah, and again, I think it is, it requires the council to take a look and measure the budget against some indicator. There is a way to override it, and as you know, we frequently have overridden it, at least in recent years, because generally, the GNPIPD has been in the 0.6 to 1.5 range for the last five to six years.
Actually, it's been lower than that.
Been lower than that. It's been very, very low. But it still makes you look at it, which I think is important.
All right, any public comments? Okay, seeing none, bring it to the council. Okay, entertain a motion?
Move for passage.
Has written?
Has written.
Okay, and moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Seeing no questions or comments, call the roll.
Counselor from Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 8, please.
Item number 8, "Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding Age Eligibility for Candidates for Elected Office: Requested Action to Approve the Order Directing that an Amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to the age eligibility for candidates for elected office."
Okay, thank you.
Okay, right now, you have to be 20 to run for office in Lewiston. There are some other minor issues about when you get to be 20, but basically, you have to be at least 20 to run for office. This would change it to 18. There was a lot of discussion on the committee about this. This was a lot of mixed feelings. I think we had two members of the committee who abstained on this issue, and we had five who supported it, but I would say of that, there were probably two who strongly supported it, and three who were lukewarm, recognizing that there are some concerns and issues about age and maturity to elect somebody to office. So basically, we brought it to you. We thought it's probably something you guys should weigh in on. It was discussed 10 years ago, and no change was recommended at that time, but it's up to you folks if you want to pursue that or not. As I say, there were mixed feelings on the committee on this issue.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Any public comments in reference to the age requirement? Mr. Sol?
Charles Arthur Sol, 135 Bartlett Street. I am, I'm 60, going to be 69 years old in March. I had to register during the Vietnam Military Police Action in Vietnam at age 18. And if I'm older or good enough to wear a uniform, a United States military, I want to be able to run for office at 18, if I so desire. So I believe wholeheartedly that, you know, 18 should be an age to run for public office in Lewiston, Maine, as you are considered an adult enough at 18 to die in military action.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a lot of mixed feelings on this. I mean, years ago, the state of Maine reduced the drinking age from 21 to 18. That turned out to be an experiment that did not last. I think if we look at societies across history, across the world, in other countries, the elders are the ones who most often tend to rule in that society by virtue of supposedly their wisdom, experience, life experience, or whatever. I cannot agree with reducing the age to 18, and I will vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree that I don't support this. You know, as a 30-year-old myself, I know people say I look younger than that. I'm 30, I promise. Even 20 years old, I have a lot of hesitation as someone having the life experience required to serve in office, someone who's spent pretty much the last half of his 20 serving in office. To be a good public servant, you have to have growth as a person. It directly relates to who you are as a person, and if you're not developed as a person, you're not going to be a good public servant. It's as simple as that. It's really that simple. And I don't think that someone is going to have the life experience at 18 or 19 to make the decisions that we have to make, to handle what we talked about in executive session, manage to keep things private. You could have some 18, 19-year-olds that would be phenomenal and could really help change the city. They would be far and few in between the 18 and 19-year-olds that would bring havoc to the city. And that's just the honest truth. So as a young person myself, I love to see young people step up, but there's a reason we have age limits for different offices in this country, and I think 20 is very, very generous to young people in this city, as is, and so I cannot support 18, 19.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor LaJoy?
Yes, I would agree with the 20 age limit. I think that's a good draw between, we'll say, 18 and 21, being an adult, if that's the case. And even at times, I guess, 21, you may not be considered an adult the way you act, so. So I think we should leave it the way it is, and possibly in the future, if things change, you know, maybe we can look at it again.
Okay.
But for now, leave it the way it is.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Jelineus?
You know, sort of lean in on my, you know, what I know about brain development and development overall, and knowing that 18, we're not done developing, even though, you know, I think what's hard about this is that there's so much disparity about, like, when we go and serve, when we're allowed to go and serve for our country, or when we're allowed to drink, or when we're allowed to vote, or when we're allowed to serve. And that, I think, makes this a difficult topic because of that disparity. But I would have a hard time getting behind this, basically just really echoing what Counselor Jensen said. I would feel the same way about it.
Okay, thank you. I also am struggling with this, but I, and then I'm not going to vote to support reducing the age. But I do believe it's incumbent upon communities to identify ways to involve 18 to 20-year-olds when the opportunity arises. And we have committees, many committees, that a young person could gain experience before a run for office, and I think that's where we can make a difference as a city council, encourage them to engage in that way. Did you have any final comments?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, there's a national movement afoot to allow 16-year-olds the right to vote, and I think that would be a step in the wrong direction as well.
All right.
I just don't think the life experience and wisdom necessary to make the kinds of decisions that you're asked to make exists at that young an age. I mean, there are some people 40 that couldn't make that decision, I agree, but I think if you look at the majority in each age group and take it from there.
Okay. So what do we need for a motion here? There's no motion on the table.
There's no motion on the table. I think we would ask that you vote on it, since it is a recommendation from the charter committee, and if you're not in support, you would simply vote no.
Okay. So the motion would be on the table, what the charter committee is recommending, and then we're just going to vote against it?
That would be my understanding, but I'm happy to have Ed comment on that approach.
That certainly would be clear. I think you could probably indefinitely postpone the item, which does the same thing.
Indefinitely table it?
Yeah. A motion to indefinitely postpone effectively kills the item.
I make a motion that we indefinitely postpone the approval of this order.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. And Madam Clerk, are you comfortable with that?
Sure, that's fine. So the motion is to indefinitely postpone the recommendation for Amendment Number 7 from the committee.
Okay. Any final questions or comments from the councils? Seeing none, call the roll.
Counselor from Word 4?
To postpone, yes.
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 Item number 8.
Item number 8, you said, item number?
It is Amendment Number 7 from the committee.
Yes.
It's agenda item number 8, but it's Article Number 7, Amendment Number 7 from the committee.
Okay. It's a good way to find out if people are on their toes.
Sorry.
There's a young lady in the audience that jumped right on it. Thank you. All right, so.
That's to postpone?
Indefinitely, what's the wording?
Definitely postpone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. So Counselor from Word 4 is a yes to indefinitely postpone this matter?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor from Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 9.
Item number 9, "Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding Minor Technical Changes: Requested Action to Approve the Order Directing that an Amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot which relates to minor technical changes."
Okay, there are a series of changes here. The first one is, right now, in the charter, there is a limitation on individuals who are employed by the city, in the broadest sense, city or school, from being elected to office, to city municipal office. It's in the section of the charter under the council. We're moving it to the back of the charter under a section called prohibitions, or it's either prohibitions or limitations. So we would move it back there, and we'd also specify more clearly that it applies to both the city and to the school department, so that you cannot be a city or school employee or be in another point of office, city or school, point of office, and serve on either the council or the school committee. Second, we are eliminating the ability to sign nominating petitions in pencil. That's apparently been overlooked for a number of years. I don't think we want nominating petitions signed in a changeable medium, so that would eliminate, it would have to be signed in ink. Would adjust the timeline for issuing and filing nominating petitions without changing the length of time allowed for petition circulation. Right now, we get up against a very time crunch to try to get everything in at the end of the nominating petition period, get all of it verified, and ensure that everybody's met the requirements, and then get it out to the printer in time to get it printed for the election. We're basically just taking that whole period now and moving it back 15 days, so you'll have the same amount of time to circulate. You can just start 15 days earlier and end 15 days earlier. We would also adjust the dead time deadline for filing nominating petitions. Right now, it's, I think, 4:30 on the last day of petitions to the, we're just changing that to the normal close of business, which at this time is 4:00 p.m. So it just eliminates that need to stay open for an extra half an hour on that day.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Sol?
Charles Sol, 135 Bartlett Street, Lewiston, Maine. Mr. Mayor, would you have Mr. Barrett, the Honorable Mr. Barrett, please reiterate what he said about school nominations, and that was a part of what he just put forth to the board, city council?
Did you speak specifically to the school?
About signing petitions and.
We're just, we're moving the date petitions become available back by 15 days or forward by 15 days.
I thought it was something in regards to the school committee and.
That school employees cannot run for school.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, can you reiterate?
Can you just repeat that portion of that?
Yes. Right now, it has always been our understanding that the charter prohibits a city employee, which includes both school and city employees, from holding elective office. So if you're an employee of the school department, you cannot be a city councillor or a school committee member. If you're a city employee, you cannot be a city councillor or a school committee member. We're just moving that section of the charter someplace to make it clearer that applies universally, and specifically adding the language because we're frequently, Kathy's frequently questioned by, you know, I'm a teacher, can I run for office? Yeah, can I be a city councillor? And universally, we've said no. This would just make it clear in the charter.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd agree with every technical change on here except for the prohibiting, like, an employee of the school department of serving on the council and, like, an employee of the city from serving on the school committee. I mean, I brought it up last time. I still have yet to see how someone could directly, you know, use that position to their benefit. I don't know if you guys are aware, there's a city councillor, I believe in Gorham, either Westbrook or Gorham, that works as an ed tech at an elementary school, or one of the schools in the district, and there was kind of a court battle over it, and I think she ended up winning. So I don't know if that was looked into at all by the, did you guys look into that case at all?
I'm vaguely familiar with it, and it seems to me there's a somewhat different situation between Gorham and here, but I don't really, I think, I don't remember all of the details, so no.
Okay, I just wonder how, like, if a custodian here at City Hall served on the school committee, how, you know, what's, I guess, the conflict there? Did you guys, like, discuss scenarios in the committee?
Not really, because basically, what we were trying to do is just make it clear in the charter what our understanding and how we have actually interpreted the charter over time. So right now, we have basically been telling people, you can't, if you're a city employee, in the broadest sense of either school or city, you cannot be an elected official.
Okay. If anything, I'd prefer clarification kind of the opposite direction, that it would be, would be okay. So, I mean, if that's included, I'm going to vote no on this, but if my colleagues are amenable to taking that part out, I could support it.
Hey. Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding of the word employee would include anybody who takes remuneration from the city. remuneration from the city. That could be, as a counselor, finance committee member, planning board member, their employees of the city, I think, in the legal eye, because they're receiving a benefit for their service. So I think it's been plain to me that they can't run, and I think this clarifies it, and I think it should remain that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I got to tell you, my struggle is that it's when it comes to budget season that I do believe that that would be a bias, or potential biased vote of a member, not looking out for the best interest of the community, but looking out for the best interests of their job opportunity. So that, I guess that's what concerns me about allowing employees to be on boards and committees. My thoughts, though. Any other comments? Counselor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think that not only conflict of interest, but the appearance of conflict should apply in this case, and I think you just pointed that out.
Okay. Any other, Counselor Joy?
I think it is, or the committee is just making it clearer as to identifying the person, or, yeah, the person that wants to run. So right now, it's if you're employed with the city, you cannot hold office within the city, which individuals in the school department would be part of the city and therefore. So I think you're just making it clearer. So I don't see any, you know, any difference on that. So I would vote to move that forward.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. So Counselor, I think we, Counselor Jensen's thoughts are that if, that an employee of the school should be allowed to run for office. And I know he's one vote, but with the numbers we have here tonight, one vote controls that. So you're not supportive of that? Is that what you're saying, Counselor Lejoy?
I think you brought up a good point, is, you know, when it comes to budget time and stuff like that, there can be an influential direction of some sort. I'm not saying there will be, but there's a possibility that it would be there that could make a difference.
Okay.
And therefore, I think even at status quo, I mean, in other words, identify it more precisely is the way to go. I think that's why we're doing this this evening, is to identify things more clearly, you know, so that the next councils or officials will look at it and understand it.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I believe you only need four votes. You need a majority.
Right. So the city charter says that all motion shall pass, or motions pass the city council with a minimum of four affirmative votes.
Okay, thank you.
So something with a four to one vote tonight would pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, so we'll need, I know we had a motion started, but.
Counselor Lejoy moved, I seconded, I believe.
Okay, moved as written?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, call the roll.
Sure. Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
No.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to one.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number Ten, please.
Item Number Ten, Public Hearing and Adoption of an Order Regarding an Amendment to the City Charter Regarding Elimination of Antiquated Provisions. Requested action to approve the order directing that an amendment to the Lewiston City Charter be placed on the November 2nd, 2021 municipal ballot, which relates to elimination of antiquated provisions.
There are several provisions in the Charter that no longer have any real meaning. One is requirement that the council adopt personnel ordinance. That's been superseded by the city's personnel rules and regulations, which are adopted by order, and also by our union agreements, which cover the vast majority of city employees. The second is, the Finance Committee is currently the Pension Board. That is a carryover from the days when the city had an independent pension plan. That pension plan has been off the books for many years and no longer has any beneficiaries, has one beneficiary, but that can be handled individually by Finance. And there is a provision that guaranteed certain wages and benefits of employees who are employed at the time the Charter was originally adopted in 1979 to be carried forward into the new Charter. We don't have any employees who are still here that are covered or assisted by that provision, so it's no longer necessary.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Any public comments in reference to this? Mr. Soul?
Charles Soul, 135 Bartlett Street. Who's going to determine what is antiquated? And you've given three examples. Are there any more hidden in the Charter itself? And that's a little scary, because what's antiquated to you may not be antiquated to someone else. Unless you can determine who will be determining what and what is antiquated, I have a problem with that. And I still will be voting no to a city charter change.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to point out that the changes themselves are outlined in the council packet.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Move for passage is written.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. Any final comments? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, please.
One quick comment.
Yes.
I just want to recognize members of the committee that worked on this. Those were Patty Gagnon, Frances Gagnon, Steve Morgan, Roger Philippon, Linda Scott, and Jennifer Williams. And I know, I know at least one of them here, I suspect some others came in that I didn't see, but they were very busy and I think we had almost 100% attendance at all of our meetings. We may have had one excused absence during that time. And it was a very pleasant group to work with. We didn't always agree on everything, but once we talked it through, we agreed on what we wanted to put together and send to you folks, so.
Yeah, I just, so I'd like to add, because for a real diverse group, and they truly were a diverse group, at least in thought and opinions, I think, they really did work well together. And I think that was one of the biggest things when I spoke with folks who had applied for that position, that I brought up. I remember specifically a conversation with Patty and how she, along with several others, reassured me that that was going to be the goal of this committee. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Eleven.
Item Number Eleven, Public Hearing and First Passage Regarding an Amendment to the Administrative Code Regarding Review of Elected Officials' Compensation. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Sections Two dash seventy-six, salary of elected and appointed officials, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing on said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay, move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Lejoy, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Anything staff wants to mention about this?
This was actually another recommendation from the Charter Committee, but upon further review, we felt that it was actually more applicable to put it in the administrative code, the administrative ordinance, rather than the city charter.
Okay, thank you. So no attempts at this point are being made to change elected officials' compensation?
No, those will be brought before the council at a later date.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? To the public, Mr. Morgan?
I never saw a microphone I didn't like.
[laughing]
Anyways, I just wanted to promote this issue more than anything. We did talk about it in the Charter Committee a little bit, and we think it's well overdue. I know when I was on the council, just before I get out, we tried to make a motion, I think we increased the mayor's salary.
Thank you.
A little bit, but we didn't increase the city councilors, and this hasn't been increased in quite some time. And I know what it takes, and I wasn't running again, so I wasn't looking for myself, but I know what it takes to take phone calls during the day on the weekend, to stop and chat with somebody at Shaw's who's one of your constituents, and then review the items when they get sent to you, and then talk amongst yourselves in executive sessions and a number of things. I think that thing should be addressed sooner rather than later, because what's going to happen again is, if you wait until after the end of the year to talk about this, then the next council will feel the same way. Well, I don't want to vote myself a raise, so why don't you vote yourself a raise right now? And some of you may, well, I'm looking at you, and most of you won't make it again. I'm just kidding.
[laughing]
No, I'm just kidding. But I think you should talk about it before the end of the year and pass that, pass that forward. I think we gave some recommendations from the Charter that you could look at and discuss and go from there. And that's all I've got to say. You're all doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to remind the public, so if this council did take that up, which I believe we're going to have that discussion, any vote to raise compensation to elected officials would not occur with this council. So we would have to go through an election cycle. So that's a protection provided, I think, to ensure that rogue elected officials aren't just pumping their salaries. I'll also add this, you know, I've served over a decade with this community, between the council, school committee, and now in the mayor's position. Our community asks an incredible amount from our elected officials, and it really does take away from your personal life and your professional life. I can attest, you know, my business has suffered a chunk this year and last year. So I just, you know, like Steve said, we, our community asks a lot. So I think it's fair to have this discussion, and I think it's fair for us to look out for future city councils, mayors, and school committees. Because I really think we have to look at planning board, what, $600 a year, and the amount, I think Ms. Gagnon was on, Mrs. Gagnon was on the planning board, right?
Board of Appeals.
Okay, Board of Appeals. But the amount of time the planning board, you know, volunteers for our community, that's just almost an insult. So anyway, just my two cents. We have a motion on the table, correct?
We do, yes.
Okay. Any public, other public comments? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Item Number Twelve, Public Hearing and First Passage Regarding an Amendment to the Administrative Code Regarding Review of City Attorney Services at Least Every Ten Years. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Section Two dash three-three-seven, Review of City Attorney Appointment, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing on said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Entertain a motion?
So move.
Second the motion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Clement. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public. Okay, back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
So I really want to thank our staff member who's here to speak on our next agenda item. I realize sitting through these agenda items is probably after, you know, after a long day is challenging. But anyway, Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Item Number Thirteen, Resolve: Accepting and Appropriating the Grant of $62,500 From the National Recreation and Park Association Pursuant to the Terms of the Attached MOU. Requested action to approve the resolve accepting and appropriating the park and recreation mentorship for rural youth impacted by opioids grant of $62,500 from the National Recreation and Park Association.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Lejoy, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. Brief presentation or...
Yeah, I can, I can, I have more.
Okay.
Thank you so much. My name's Nicole Welch. I'm coming up on month five as the Recreation Superintendent for the City of Lewiston. The last five months have been busy, exciting, overwhelming, in a lot of good ways. That's what I keep telling everybody. But it's been great to get to know the community, you know, getting to know the, my colleagues through the City of Lewiston, community stakeholders. I've worked with the school a little bit and a lot of the local nonprofits. And a lot of my conversations I've had with them are, what do you want out of a recreation department? What do you, what does the community need? And a lot of the needs that I were hearing actually mirror a lot about, or mirror a lot of the national needs and requests that other recreation departments around the country are getting. Recreation departments and the parks and recreation industry in general has changed immensely over the last twenty, twenty-five years. It's no longer just a, you know, throwing a soccer ball on the field. Recreation and parks divisions are asked to do so much more these days. They've really developed into community partners. They are helping with food insecurity, senior citizens activities, public health awareness. There are so many checkboxes that the parks and recreation industry have to fill these days. And one of these is also youth mentorships. This opportunity for the grant kind of came across my doorstep about two weeks after I accepted the position here, and I was very excited for the opportunity. In speaking with members at the school, I've talked with Tree Street a couple of times. We have a Rosati Program, Leadership Program. There's already so many great leadership programs and youth mentorship programs in the city, and I think this is a great opportunity for the municipality to be able to capitalize and help support these already really strong programs. So I think this grant opportunity would be a really good thing for the department.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? Counselor Jelineus?
Nicole, you have come into this position like a storm, and I'm just so thankful for you, and we're lucky to have you. So thank you for this. I am really excited about this. I think the grant targeting youth who are impacted by the opioid epidemic is so important. So I just want to commend you for taking the time that you've taken since you've been here in such a short time to really assess the needs of our community and applaud your efforts.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thanks for taking the initiative on this. This is great to see. I'm glad to have you in the community. Some experience on the school committee, whenever I see grants, I just have to worry that, you know, when the funding does run out, are we going to be kind of tied in with a program that we're going to have to either decide to cut or spend more money on? So is the money that, like, the sixty-two K, you know, amount-ish, is that being used just for one year of a program? Is it going to be spread out over multiple years?
So it's a reimbursable grant over three years. When I submitted for the grant, there was a kind of blanket budget that I did have to provide alongside some other paperwork for the process. There are kind of three or four different kind of earmarked areas. The final budget has to be due into NRPA by the thirtieth of September. So our plan over the next week and a half are kind of to define our exact role, game plan, to really develop a roadmap that we can follow over the next three years to best implement the money, to make sure that this doesn't fizzle out, you know, in June of 2023. A lot of the purchases that we're going to be making are infrastructure-related, including recreational activities, like snowshoes, kayaks, water safety devices, things that we can use to help educate and mentor youth now, but then we can also use them for, you know, five, seven, ten years down the road, obviously making sure that things pass, like safety ordinances and such. Other pieces of that include technology pieces, knowing that we're, technology is only growing, and especially the youth in our community, giving them more opportunities to have access to technology, and also just use it as a game building outlet. You know, computer software-ing and game development and YouTubers, those are all things that in, you know, ten to fifteen years down the road, a lot of our, you know, youth between ages twelve and eighteen, they're going to be diving down those new industries that we haven't even seen yet. So giving them opportunities to learn more about the technology world in a safe environment, and also give them a little bit more freedom outside the classroom than they would totally normally use. So a lot of the funding we're going to be using is going to be things that basically just stick around for the long haul. I have had a chance to talk with the community outreach folks at Bates. They're definitely, they're excited to see what kind of game plan we come up with, and they're going to be helping me to find some mentors from the college itself. And I've also, in my, probably the first couple of weeks, I had a opportunity to talk to Superintendent Langley about connecting potentially with some school opportunities as well. I don't see this money necessarily going in towards staffing, because at the end of the day, three years from now, we have to fill that staffing. I'm more looking at the infrastructural pieces that we can find volunteers and just create more assets for the community as a whole.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. I guess my big worry would be that once the grant funding runs out, are you going to come to the city and ask for funding for, to continue the program?
I don't see, I don't see that being as a part of the budget. Most of the, the pieces that we're going to be buying, are, are you talking about, so say we, you know, buy three or four kayaks and then five years down the road, they're deemed unsafe? Where do I replace those items? Or are you talking more specifically about employee wages?
Yeah, we might have a disconnect here.
Yeah.
I guess, I, maybe not, I didn't, I might not have read this right, and I apologize. But to me, it sounds like a new program is being created with the grant funding that we're, that we're getting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that program comes with costs and everything associated with it? And it's being paid for by the grant funding, right?
Yep, and all those, and the, sorry, sorry to cut you off. And the primary costs are going to be one-time costs. So if I go and we decide we want to, you know, connect with a local youth nonprofit and we're going to develop a, a youth mentoring kayaking opportunity on the Ancestragon for next summer, you know, say we have earmarked money for those objects, we will be using community volunteers and already established mentors that we volunteer in their time to put into these programs. So there wouldn't be an ongoing cost with finding folks to promote and recruit. But there would be the one-time cost to kind of buy a lot of the infrastructural needs. So that way, more long-term, we can keep offering these same kind of mentorship programs without having that $62,000 kind of still in our pocket.
Okay.
Does that make more sense?
Yes.
Okay.
A program that we could sustain now, we just need some startup supplies for it. And the grant funding pays for the startup and it's not recurring expenses.
Yes, that's more eloquently worded. Yeah, definitely.
Sorry, it's late. I should have phrased that much better.
Nope, that's fine.
Is the recurring cost that always like worry me and on the school side of things? That we just got slammed by that year after year, we get these grants and, oh, now we have to decide if we want to keep the program or spend a whole lot of, you know, spend a whole lot of money. And it worries me. So knowing that these aren't recurring expenses, that's, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
And I appreciate that question. In the, so the second interview was a Zoom interview with a couple of folks from NRPA. And they had actually mentioned the budget, how I didn't have any staff members kind of built into that budget, whether it was even just like $1,000, $2,000 stipend. So, and I, I explained that I really want our department and the community to kind of get behind all of this, recognizing that in the first year, if we do need to find a, an intern, you know, and provide some sort of stipend for the first year to help us get it, get it up and running, and then kind of create like a self, self-sustainable program after that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other? Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Jelineus mentioned the word excited. I seldom get really excited about things. But I, I can see some excitement in this. The council last year, as you'll recall, during our budget deliberations, we talked long and hard about what we needed to do. And that was to support a recreation department in Lewiston. It's, it's important to the city. I mean, public safety, education, we got to have recreation in there at some point. So I think this is a great thing. It's not a tremendous amount of money, even if we had to find that somewhere in the future. The superintendent mentioned that she felt overwhelmed. I don't think she has any idea how difficult it was for us to put tonight's agenda together, because we only get to do this once every 10 years, and then make you sit through all this exciting stuff just to get up and.
It's good education. I appreciate it.
Something that we know that we're going to, going to go for anyway, so. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I believe there is. Although I did have to kind of bend over and say to Luke, do we have a motion on the table? So, ah, I just, I, I'm not sure if I provided an opportunity to the public, but are any public comments related to this matter? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counsel from Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number 14, please.
Agenda number 14, Authorization for the City Clerk to Cast the City's Ballot for the Main Municipal Association's Executive Committee and Vice President. Requested action to approve the slate of candidates as presented on the Main Municipal Association's ballot and to authorize the city clerk to cast the city's ballot for the Main Municipal Association's Executive Committee and Vice President.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Jensen, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Counsel from Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, just a quick clarification, and I think we asked you earlier, but I just want to make sure. Can a counselor make a proposal to suspend the rules to add an agenda item during a special meeting?
Sure. Yes, sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there a counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Jensen.
I move to suspend the rules with the intention of adding, to send an advisory question to voters at the polls this November, asking if they would like the city council to initiate the process to start a charter commission.
Okay, thank you.
Second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, moved by Councilor Jensen, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, I would concur with this. I have language that I would be willing to provide to the clerk already typed out or consent to her in electronic file. I think that it's important that.
How big is it? Just a small paragraph or?
Yeah, paragraph and a half, maybe.
Yeah, if it, I really think we have to get it into.
You want it on the record?
I think we have to with Councilor Jensen's motion. He needs to know if something's being added to it. Yeah.
I would, willing to read it into the record if, if Councilor Jensen.
Right, so just a reminder that this is a two-step process. The first vote would be to suspend the rules.
Okay.
And then we would need a motion to actually take action on that item.
So we really, okay, so we don't need to read that yet?
Not at this time, right.
Thank you.
So the motion before you is Councilor Jensen's motion to suspend the rules and add an item to the agenda at this time.
Okay. So I turned it over to the council with no questions or comments. Call the roll, please.
Counsel from Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And now entertain, so there is no original motion, because we just, so we'll need an original motion for the item, correct?
Yes, correct.
The motion would be as follows. Shall the city council initiate the statutory process to create a charter commission to revise the city's charter? Said process is set out in 30A MRSA 2101 et cetera. Will include an election of seven members, one from each ward, three members to be appointed by the mayor, not necessarily residents of Lewiston. Said commission is charged with the review of the current charter, making recommendations for any changes it deems necessary or advisable, and filing a final report within a year after its creation, after which any revision must be submitted to the voters. By way of explanation, this question does not create a charter commission, but seeks only to determine if the voters feel that such a process is warranted, wanted, needed, however you want to word that, and directs the municipal officers to initiate said process. Our feeling being that if there's no desire for engaging in a process that could create radical change to our charter and could still be voted down after a period of time that extends for up to two years, why would we want to engage in it in the first place?
Okay, so that was more than the motion, but I think that can be clarified afterwards. Let me just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I would, I would second the motion. And also I do have written down what Counselor Clement had written, if I can go run it to the city clerk.
Yeah, that's fine. So I really, I, I think I'm struggling with the idea that the mayor can appoint three people to it who are non-residents and that the mayor even has appointment power to the commission, because I think.
That's by state statute, Mr. Mayor.
It is, huh? I thought commissions had to be elected positions. No?
Well, you can appoint people to be elected to the commission, I believe, is the way that's worded. I'd have to check it again. It's, it's been a month or so. I suspect Mr. Barrett may have the answer in hand.
The, the choices are, you have to elect a number of individuals to the charter commission, basically reflective of the number of people on the, elected by wards. So, you know, each ward has to elect one. And then by statute, three members are appointed. The statute doesn't, it says, statute basically says, through the normal process for appointments at that community, which in this case would be appointment by the mayor.
Okay.
So you'd have seven people elected, one from each ward, and three appointed. State law gives you the allowance to appoint people from outside the city. It doesn't require it. So you could appoint just Lewiston residents, or you could go outside if you wanted to, go to Professor X, who's an expert in local government at the University of Southern Maine. But it's not required.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies, Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also, I guess, add a little bit of information to why I'm adding it now is, you know, since it's not on the agenda itself. We do have kind of a deadline, I believe, of the third for printing. So this is really the last meeting we have to get a question on the ballot to members of the public. This isn't lock us in for anything. It sends an advisory question to voters. And voters will send, you know, that advisory opinion back to the council. And I, you know, we can kind of go from there. But I know I at least felt it was important, especially it does match up with the amendments that we have on tonight. So it does kind of tie in with what we're talking about here. But, you know, I did feel it was important for us to get it on the ballot this November to at least let our residents give their opinion if they want a full charter commission or not. Since I know the Charter Review Committee did a lot of work and they were limited only to amendments, of course. And so this gives our residents of Lewiston more of a say in this, to if they want to go further than just the amendments that have been proposed.
Okay, thank you.
One clarification, because I've read through the state law. I don't remember all the details, but I just want to make sure I understand. So if this passes, the council will then put another question out on the ballot to actually create the charter commission? Or you assume that this would take care of it?
The assumption would be that the council would initiate the process. We wouldn't need to put it out again if, if the electorate says we want this.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get clarified. If you, because basically you had, if it's an advisory question, that's not binding. Then the council, if it wanted to go forward, would have to put it out to the, out on the ballot a second time to have the public vote for it. The other way you could do it is put it out now and they would create, in effect, authorize the charter commission. Then the next step is to elect it and appoint it.
Council Jensen?
Honestly, that would be my preference. I'm, I'm in full support of a charter commission at this point going forward. So the sooner that could happen, the better for me. Honestly, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
And I believe the state law specifies the form of the question.
It does. I apologize. I don't have my material with me. I'm trying to remember if this, if, if a binding question goes on, if a public hearing is required prior to the council vote. And I don't know offhand. My, my binder's upstairs. I don't.
But this isn't a binding question.
Well, but that was, that was Ed's question of.
They would have to go back to public.
Yes.
We'd have to do a public hearing if they want this to be a binding question.
Okay, yeah, so it would have to be non-binding for November, yeah. So, so Ed, Heather's just clarifying that if it remains non-binding and everyone is understanding that it's non-binding and advisory only, then it would be understood that another election would have to be held to formally vote to create a charter commission?
Right. And go through the public hearing process.
So I guess, Ed, I mean, we had a couple of conversations going there, but it could be non-binding, probably at this point, only non-binding.
Correct.
Due to lack of time for public hearing.
I think you're probably right.
Yes.
And I think the point being that if, if the public says, no, we, and we're not interested in this, then why are we going to go through the whole process of setting things up? If they say yes, then we can start the process.
And that question would be placed with no recommendation from the council, truly, just. Don't you think the public would be confused a little bit, like? And I'm not saying I'm against this, but we just had the committee. Now we're throwing a question, do you want a charter commission? Well, I guess we'll have to do education ahead of that election, because they're going to be confused at this point, I think. So we'll have to be very clear and try to provide a public, have as many, have a couple of public hearings on that. So any other comments from the council? I just, I want to make sure there's none, okay? Then I'll put it out to the public. Yep, thank you.
My name is Patty Gagne. I live at 16 Bobby Street in Lewiston. When the, when the Charter Review Committee got together and reviewed all of these changes, unless there was something that would require, as Ed mentioned, adding more people to a council or a school committee, that would require a commission to be started to, to go through those major changes. So one thing that we did in going through all of these that were positive changes and, you know, we all agreed on everything, for the most part, there are a couple of little things. I might have been the one that Ed referred to before. But this kind of, you know, gets these charter changes through, you know, by voting in November and, and the process is just a lot simpler to get these changes through. I mean, it's, and, and everything's been verified with attorneys about whether it's an amendment or a revision. So these are all amendments, not a revision, which we get everything on one. I don't know if there are one question on the ballot or eat, there are several. So they can be passed individually or not. But it doesn't require a commission, you know, what the public decides on. But the commission will add a couple more years to this entire process. So I believe you can confirm that. So it was just the, you know, expedient way, I guess, of, of getting this through, but you can help clarify that.
I think, so I think Councilor Jensen's objective, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we're going to, we accept these and we want these changes, but we want to provide the, the public, or Councilor Jensen's motion appears to want to provide the public the opportunity to say, no, we want this to go further and have a complete revision of the, the charter. So, Ed, did you have anything further?
Yeah, and looking at state law, I can't find right off the top that a public hearing is required for the council to do an order setting up a commission. Charter revisions, adoptions, procedure, the municipal officers may determine that the revision of a municipal charter be considered or that adoption of a new municipal charter be considered and by order, provide for the establishment of a charter commission to carry out that purpose as provided in this chapter.
Okay. All right.
But that's, that's real quick off the top, and I'm not, as Marty would say, I shouldn't be practicing law without a license.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Just right off the top of my head, I think this is an amazingly complicated issue to put before people without a lot of public information. Very clear explanations in the newspaper, maybe some public appearances by, by members of the council and the mayor, and a heck of a lot more work for city staff where we're going to get people calling in and saying, what's the difference? I'm not against people being informed, but the timeframe, I think, on this is very, very tight. And I think it would be a disservice to the work that the members of the committee have done and the work the council and staff have done to deal with these minor changes. I think it really would muddy the waters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jensen?
Like, well, one example, I'd like to see at-large members added to the council, and that cannot happen unless we have a charter commission. I remember talking about changes to the charter with several people, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, back in like 2015. So this is something that's been on my mind for quite a while. It's one of the reasons I came over from the school committee, so I could be a part of this process. I wish I could have been a bigger part of it, but as a council, we, we kind of have hands off until we received our recommendation. But we are the elected council. We, we do make the decisions here. So if, if I'm a member of the public and I want to see at-large council members added, I would be at this meeting, sitting in the audience there, speaking up there, demanding that as a resident of this city, can I at least have a say in, should we have a charter commission? We should be having that conversation, and we really haven't had it much. I think when we talked about the, the charter changes back in March or April, I forget. It was during the budget process. I did, you know, vocalize that I would like to see a charter commission. So it's not like this is brand new. I'm not bringing this up for the first time. We'll have several months until the election that people can get informed, just like any election. You have to do your research and you have some time ahead of time. And it's up to the responsibility of the voters to do that research. We can get out that information, though. So, you know, as a member of the public, I would be pushing for a charter commission and, and demanding that my elected officials at least give me that opportunity and that voice, considering that this is something I've been talking about for five years and, and pretty passionate about. The fact that I'm a sitting city council and I, and, you know, I'm almost struggling out to get this going. almost struggling out to get this going, completely unacceptable to me, I'm, I'm a sitting city councilor, I want to have a charter commission, I think it's at least fair that we can ask the residents of the city if they would be willing to do so. And so I'm not serving on, on this council just to, you know, just, just to serve, this is one of the things that I was very, you know, wanted to see happen, there's some changes that need to happen in this city to move forward, I think people in this city have an appetite for change, and I think we need to go further than just the amendments. I am very appreciative of the committee's work, I, and I, I mean, I voted for almost every single amendment here, I want to see this happen, and at the end of the day, if the charter commission doesn't come to fruition, if people in Lewiston don't want it, we'll at least have these changes, and I'm, I'm very happy about that. So the work that's done has been good, but to me, we can take it a step further, and the appetite for change in this city is enough that I think people want an actual charter commission. So I, I don't want to, you know, take away from anyone or anyone, the work that anyone's done, but, you know, I, I'm a sitting city council, I'm here for a reason, I want a charter commission, I've been saying it, you know, all year, I'm saying it for years now, and I'm not going to wait another 10 years before we can actually make some other changes.
All right, any other comments, Counselor Joy?
I, I guess, I meant your stance, Mr. Mayor, is that, and, and some of the other individuals that made comments is, we're asking the public this coming election to vote on the charter changes that have been proposed this evening, there's a number of them, and at the same time, we're going to ask them if they would like to create a charter commission. I guess my first thought when I'd read the papers, what the heck they're talking about? You just made decisions with a charter committee, and through that, they must have found they didn't have to go through a charter commission, so why are we voting to have a charter commission? So I, I guess, you know, I'm putting that out, so I'm, I've got a mixed feelings about saying yes to this particular proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one, one quick clarification, looking at the state law, it, it would have to be a non-binding referendum, because otherwise you would have to have 90 days until you could have an election on a binding charter commission. So if you put something in November's ballot, it would just be advisory, would not be binding.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I had two points, I forgot one of them, but one of them was Counselor Jensen, I just had a question for you, is...
You should direct your questions to the mayor.
Oh, excuse me, mayor, my question for Counselor Jensen is, what the reasoning is to adding at-large members?
Yeah, I think...
I mean, this could be a whole different topic, but that was a question I had.
Okay, so I think, I think Counselor Jensen...
And the other point I did think of is that if you have a charter commission, after the months of work and diving into all the details of our charter, a charter commission could come in and just undo everything we just did. So, I mean, if there's a purpose of needing to add at-large members, I don't know if that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. So I'm bringing it back to the council at this point, any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jensen?
I know I've, I've spoken before about, you know, like getting younger people represented on the council, and if you, you know, live in an apartment in the city, you're probably going to be moving in a few years, and the ward boundaries are not the easiest to move into, and, and the round-in, and I've had some struggles myself, moving, you know, twice so far, just serving in public office. I've spoken about it before, I don't want to go too far into it. Ideally, we could have decided before doing a charter review committee whether we want to do a full charter commission or not, that would have been a better process. But as a junior counselor, I don't decide the, the process for that, I don't know how it was decided or what was decided, but it's not up to me, so if we're at the position now where we're deciding this at the very end, when we should have done it at the beginning, I'm sorry, but it wasn't my preference, it's not what I wanted, I mentioned this months ago at the beginning of the year, that I wanted to discuss it then, and, I don't know, it fell on deaf ears or something, I don't know. So I, I don't mean to get too frustrated here, but ideally, we could have done this from the beginning, and if I had known the timeline better of the process of how we're going to do this, this once every 10 years process, then I would have advocated strongly, as I am now, at the beginning for that charter commission. I didn't know it would come to this right now, if I had known that, I, I mean, I would have made moves earlier, but again, the process was not clear to me as a city councilor, and I'm not going to cede the power that I have as an elected official in representing my ward, just because of, of a process that may have had some, some flaws in it, it wasn't exactly clear to me. So I completely agree that this is the wrong time to do it, it should have been done at the beginning, completely agree, that just was not an option for me as an elected official, so that, that's kind of my reasoning there. So I know there's some hesitancy of some people to form a charter commission, but again, that should be up to the residents of Lewiston, we shouldn't just dismiss it entirely, people should have a say, it's once every 10 years, I, I think it's, it should be enough to ask the residents once every 10 years if they want to do a charter commission. I think that's fair.
So I, I kind of, yeah, one second, I, I disagree with you, it's our responsibility too, to decide, I mean, we, if we want to put it before the voters, it falls with us first, and then the voters, you know, say yea, yea, or nay, but the, the council would be the one that would have to get a, you know, you'd have to get a majority vote from the council, that's the first step. Counselor's one minute.
First of all, a question, I guess, that I would throw out there, are we restricted to going through this process only once in every 10 years, or could we, six months from now, 12 months from now, determine that we want to establish a charter commission?
Yeah, the, the requirement in the charters have a charter committee every 10 years, so that you have to have, but you can do a charter commission at any time. You could vote tonight to have, to actually put a binding question to the public, it just couldn't be on the November election. You could vote in December to put a question on the June ballot about having a charter commission, which would be a binding question, or as, as has been suggested tonight, if you want something on November, it could only be advisory.
Mr. Mayor, I think, in this process earlier, I, I heard the illusion that maybe there wasn't an opportunity, my recollection of the process is that the council voted to do it this way, with a charter committee, had to report from the charter committee.
I, I agree, I think we did have that discussion, and at the time, we decided that we weren't...
And if we can do this with a charter revision committee anytime we want to, then let's not go forward with this advisory referendum, muddy the waters, and we can take, take it up with the next body, can take it up if there is sufficient public outcry. And the public has the right to petition the council for anything at any time, and I don't want to create murkiness at all.
And, and just to clarify a little further, this body could vote to put out the question on a charter commission, that could be voted on in June, so you could make the decision today, that would carry forward after the election, it doesn't change, because there's, the council's changed.
In order for that to happen, the motion would have to be withdrawn, and a new motion brought forth, I would think, right?
It would, at least it would, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what you could do is instruct staff to go through the process of a public hearing and put it on an agenda item, and then that way, you have the public notice, you have the public hearing, you take the vote, knowing now that the earliest it would be for a binding would be June. And it would remove, do, do they have a motion?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, you would have to withdraw the motion for the advisory question, if you win that round.
And if we, if we did it that way, then we would truly have a, an announced public hearing, that then the public could come in and weigh in, and we still could do it in this term, and it's going to go up or down by the council, but at least I think that would give you the public discussion of why you think the community should have a full charter commission.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, you know, initially, I was in support of even pushing this forward in November, because I felt like the timing actually made sense, wasn't necessarily confusing, but rather, if the voters are looking at all this stuff charter-related, why not have another question that talks about, you know, so I was not concerned about that, definitely would need some education, for sure, but as I hear about this being simply advisory, and we have the potential to wait until June, and do the public hearing, and, and do it in that manner, I'd be more supportive of that than I would be the initial motion.
I'm, I'm, yeah, completely amenable to that idea, my goal as a council is just to make moves to get this on the ballot, advisory or binding, one of the two, just so that residents can have a say in it, so as long as it's happening, I am 100% content.
So the public hearing would be more, I mean, then there would be a vote, or the council may not go, I mean, you may lose that vote, but at least we have that public discussion, and I, okay. So, do we need an amend, we need an amendment, or what, how, we just withdraw it and start rush?
Right, so, right, the motion was moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jensen, so if the makers of the motion were interested in withdrawing their motion, then it comes off the table.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, and now I'll entertain a new motion? No? Oh, we're directing staff?
You're just directing staff.
And you don't need a motion for that? You don't want to, okay, perfect, thank you. Yes?
Move to join?
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Joy, all in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody, for hanging out with us for a few hours, we really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We talked about this some time ago.